April 1st, 2024 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frat.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanum.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Stout.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
Mrs. Westfall is excused. Six members of council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I welcome you all to our city council meeting and ask you to join us in our pledge of allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Frat.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item three is additions to the agenda, and I would like to add a couple of things. As for A, we're going to get a TARTA update from our representative on the TARTA board, Mary Morrison. As agenda item five, A, that's where I put these seven ordinances for changes in our codified ordinances for fees, if you choose to do so. And at agenda item 16, Chief Miller would like to give an update on the flock of cameras scattered around town. At 16. Item 17, we'd like to give you an update, or Mr. Sanford can give you an update, on the autism training results. Is that correct, Mr. Sanford?
Yes.
Mr. Frat.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of city council. I've added a couple of things from staff. Anything else, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Or Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aller.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Ms. Brining.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our agenda is approved for this evening's meeting. Agenda item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on March 18th. Mr. Frat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of March 18th, 2024, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for approval of the meeting minutes from March 18th, 2024, as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. Agenda item four, I'd like to welcome Mary Morrison, our TARTA representative, to the podium. She has brought with her TARTA leadership and Laura Kaprowski, the township's representative of the board, is I correct, Joel Barron, and also Rick Bailey is with us tonight as well.
Ricky is our Chief Customer Experience and Mobility Officer. So I brought all the Sloveniites I could find.
To our residents. One is a former resident with the high school.
Native, but a native.
Native, that's correct.
Thank you, Mayor, President Frat, city council people. Thank you for having us once again. I am here, we are here to give you our annual update on TARTA's progress and transformation since the passage of issue 12, replacing a property tax with a sales tax. Okay.
Can we do a PowerPoint? Sure. That's our technology guy over there.
I didn't get it until we were sitting here, so I didn't know that you wanted a PowerPoint. I can send it to Chuck.
Is the projector handy?
Well, it's attached to the whiteboard.
Can you get it on the whiteboard?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Just like anything else, whatever, in a situation like this, Windows is going to want to update.
Guaranteed.
It's very exciting, so I do want you to see it. Thinking, thinking. I'm going to talk while it does that. Since our last meeting, TARTA has made significant strides in expanding services all across Sylvania County, not just in the Sylvania area. We kicked off 2023 by launching our new on-demand rideshare service, TARTA Flex. TARTA Flex was built to connect suburban customers to TARTA's fixed route service with destinations within their zones. This service quickly became popular during double the ridership of the Cola Ride system it replaced, and I'm happy to say that TARTA Flex is a success in 2023. My question is really all that exciting to be perfectly accurate. In 2023, the Northwest Zone, which will come up when we have the map, largest use of Flex, almost three-fourths of all Flex rides. You can now take TARTA Flex from downtown to Sylvania to the Toledo Express Airport for $3, as long as you are sure to book at least 24 hours in advance. And once the map comes up, you'll see the usage that Sylvania Township is the largest zone that we have, with an overlapping zone with the Southwest area, which covers Hubble, Springfield, and those areas. TARTA Flex is a success. You'll notice that in 2023, the Northwest Zone had 14,826 rides. The next highest ride area was the Southwest Zone, with only 4,306 rides, within the overlapping zone, approximately 1,600 rides. Rossford, which just started at the end of last year, had 391. Compared to the Cola Ride, which in 2022, for all of the TARTA service area, only had 11,596 rides. In January of 2023, only 619 rides. And at this point, I'm going to invite, I've come up, talk a little bit more about TARTA.
Well, and plus, if you haven't already, I got a pitch, I hope you will download the Flex app. It's exciting for us because this is our service that actually operates on an app. And I also want to say that I'm really proud of it because we were the first of really over 10 to 15 transit systems in Ohio. We work as a consortium, we try to maximize, economize the resources that we have, and so all of us transit systems, like I said, it was somewhere between 10 and 15 of us wanted to move to a microtransit on demand, like TARTA Flex. And our team was the one that stepped up to do that first, ahead of Cincinnati, ahead of Akron. And these are systems that we aspire to, and so in the last year, TARTA has invited a lot of transit systems, our peers in Ohio, to come and learn from us and even speak at national conferences. So what a change from TARTA sometimes being the last to adopt to being one of the first. But in your packet in the presentation, I'm going to switch to fixed route. We're really proud of TARTA Flex. It was designed, I just want to say, for communities like Sylvania, Sylvania Township, because of development patterns and your residents' needs. But we still have our bread and butter, 20 fixed routes is what TARTA operates. And happy to say, as you look in 2023, the most popular routes, Route 2 and Route 5, in that top three, serve Sylvania. So you are getting some, you know, very popular route, very active, serves a lot of critical sites, and Flower Hospital, as I show you, kind of break down the next slide, it is really popular to get to Flower Hospital. I want to say, having worked in transit industry, again relating this to specifically City of Sylvania, fixed routes are really critical oftentimes to bring workforce to communities like Sylvania. Okay, I want to be honest, your residents probably really, it's a great fit for Flex, for TARP, for Muddy Shuttle, but you think about your major employers, it's getting people from the other cities, Toledo especially, to the City of Sylvania. And then just right here on the right is about our fleet. We, again, back to that economy, we also economized our routes. So we were able to go from 200 buses to 68. Part of that was making the hard decision to end our relationship with Toledo Public Schools, but the other is that we have really made our routes efficient. We do, I could go on, and I'd love to talk to you for an hour about interlining, but let me just say the fact that we can use one bus to run the 20 on Central Avenue, turns into the 10L, down our Transit Hub, and goes out to Rossford, as out to Amazon. And those are just the kinds of things that the team and I are focused on. So if you go to the next page about fixed routes, 2 and 5, said that's your top routes here serving City of Sylvania. And so within January and February, just those over 3,000 rides both months are happening within Sylvania. And can you guess who the top location is? Can you guess where it? Without seeing, and sorry, I kind of didn't give you any help. I didn't bring a route map. It's Flower Hospital. And it's on both the 2 and the 5, they do more than 1,000 rides, thank you, each month. So 2,000 to 3,000. So that just shows you that that is your employer, and it's probably, you know, that is getting a lot of utilization. Great. Well, let's catch up here. If I go down. Okay, so we're going to Muddy Shuttle. And have brought, you got a flyer here, so we brought the Muddy Shuttle back, our second. Keep going. Yep, one more. There you go. Stop. So Muddy Shuttle kicked off last Friday on opening day, and then we'll bring it back Memorial Day all the way through September. We're doing Friday and Saturday games again. You know, this was time and again, when we were out talking to the community, not just about issue 12, but developing our future plans in TARTA next. This is what we heard. I mean, bring back Sunday service, bring back Muddy Shuttle. And I love it that transit can be viewed as critical for jobs and doctor's appointments, but also just having a really good time. And it's so affordable for families. $3 round trip. With the summer youth pass that we have, children can ride free if they sign up for that pass. So thank you to the City of Sylvania and the staff that we work with in terms of getting a safe location. It's at Monroe Street and Silica Drive, and free to park here, and then we just drop you off right at the door. And so thrilled to bring that back. And again, we've added probably more than double the amount of games that we're doing. So let's, now I'm going to kind of switch into some finances, grants and finances about TARTA. At first, we have worked really hard to bring a lot of grants back. Since 2020, it's been around $40 million. And some of those, I will say, were because of COVID. A lot of those were really competitive grants that the team and I worked hard on. The most recent grant was this $3.8 million grant from ODOT. 700,000 of it was an allocation we normally get, but over $3 million was competitive. There are over 60 transit systems in the state of Ohio. So we all get some allocation, and then we all competitively go after the rest of the funds. There's only 75 million per year for us. And happy to say, I'm highlighting the Bus Rapid Transit study because this will, we will seek the City of Sylvania's involvement. That would be something that we would create or introduce on Monroe Street, starting in Sylvania, and potentially going all the way, following the Route 2, all the way to Oregon. But at least for this first initial study, it would be focused on from Flower Hospital in Sylvania all the way downtown. Bus Rapid Transit has become really popular in our industry. It's much more affordable than trying to introduce light rail. And so you see cities like Indianapolis have several of them. Cincinnati's proposed several BRT routes. Cleveland has one, and we'll actually be taking some trips to these nearby cities and inviting local officials, leaders to join us. What is really neat, I mean, first of all, to describe it, BRT is not like anything we have here. It is designed, again, to be fast and efficient, so you will have less stops than the Route 2. For instance, you may get on at Flower Hospital, you may not stop again till, all the way till, let's just say, up toward the Aldies on Monroe Street. And then again, at Monroe Street. The study will determine the stops, but it's really to be, again, the on and off is not to happen every couple of minutes, but to be very efficient. The other cool thing about BRT is that it's to spur development. And that's one reason why we do want to go to Cleveland, because when they introduced their BRT, the Health Line, all the development that came with that, it does ignite interest in development, too. So I'll just pause there, but we're excited. I think it's about a half million dollars to help us do that study.
If I could ask a question about that piece of it.
Yep.
So if BRT is introduced from Sylvania to downtown Toledo, would your gut tell you that the development that you anticipate would be on the Sylvania end of the route, the Toledo end of the route, or both?
I think both.
Okay.
And I think different types, but it should be both.
Okay.
I do think it's, and seeing Sonoma Flats, that, you know, you have TOD, Transit Oriented Development, Walkable Development already occurring here. And so there is a lot of that type of development that will come with the BRT. Yep. And then again, just to let you know, grant-wise, what do we receive? TARTA, $7 million from the federal government. And there are some strings, some guardrails around that. TARTA was using it for operations. That's not what it's intended for. You can use it for preventive maintenance, which means our maintenance team working on our vehicles. It's to be your capital dollars. And in the past, TARTA was so, had such little local investment that we had to use it for operations. So it's been a game changer to be able to start using that to actually replace our 16-year-old buses, instead of just trying to keep them rolling on the roads. And then, you know, it's always feels like, I don't want to say a fight, but it's definitely a campaign every two years to go down to the State House. Mary has been with us twice to really just implore the state governor how much we need their funding. It's $75 million for over 60 of us transit systems. We're only here to 700,000 users. We try to be innovative with it. We also sometimes are using some of that state funding to match the local, I'm sorry, the federal funding, but every federal fund you do have to match, especially big competitive grants with local funds. All right, so don't want to forget that when issue 12 passed, all of our original TARTA communities were in collaboration and funding. So $90,000 each year comes to the City of Sylvania. We've done it twice. And also just listed there Sylvania Township, too, and what they've been using it for. So we will very soon be reaching out to the city again. It's a partnership, I mean, really, what the city desires, as long as it's in the parameters of what, it's basically statute, what it said, what we've had the voters pass, they can do. We just like to have kind of the details of what the project will be, so we can be accountable to the voters.
Transportation improvements on the books now coming.
Yeah.
Plenty of opportunities.
Great, great. So I know $90,000 per year may not seem like much, but we do allow to, you can carry it year to year, but over 10 years, that's almost a million dollars. Okay, so local support at TARTA, where were we? We were back in 2021, property tax was only coming in 13.5 million. Now, last year was our first full year of sales tax. It's 41.5 million.
What rate is that sales tax now?
Five.
Half a percent?
Half a percent.
Okay.
Half a percent, which if you can see the map, I know it's not like best size, but if you can look at, now we're on par. Every major city, all of the six top cities, regions, metro regions, which we're a part of, are all at .5 or higher. So Cincinnati is at .8% sales tax for their transit. Cleveland has always been at 1%. They got it at the beginning. And Columbus is at .5%, but they're going into ballot this year for another .5%. So they'll be maxed out at 8%. So, you know, again, we're right on par with our peers, and if you look at like Dayton and Akron, what we have coming in, local investment, is very, very similar to them.
41.5 million was, what were you originally, or when you were running this through the math, what were you projecting relative to the 41.5?
32.
Okay, so it came in substantially higher than what you had just.
Yes, and unfortunately, vehicles have gone up substantially a lot, the cost of, I mean, what were cutaways, right? Now they're well over 100. So all of our costs have gone up in capital costs, inflation, but it still has allowed us to, it is, believe it, it is well appreciated, and it has also helped us not have just zero reserves. That's not, that's just not okay. Transit systems, and they definitely need to have a year of reserves. We're getting close, not there, but we're getting close to that. And having this coming in does help us project in the future. When we talk about something like Bus Rapid Transit and those capital investments, that is very meaningful. All right, well, any questions about, I got the fun stuff with the funding, or if you have other questions as you look at it afterwards, you can certainly reach out to me if you want to talk further, if there's more data you'd like to have. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Rick. He's going to wrap it up with your term and set. Yeah, Wednesday, we're looking forward to meeting with City of Sylvania, Sylvania Township, on the reconstruction Monroe Street with the overpass. 470, 23, 23, so. We're very aboard, as Joel mentioned, Mary, very interested in us being involved, and we're looking forward to that, too, how we can help, you know, mitigate and do what we can to make sure that people can still get around.
There's a big project coming in the middle of 2025, and it will cause a lot of people to reroute themselves.
Well, we want to be there, help residents, help the biz. Well, we want to be there, help residents, help the business, however it happens. All right, thank you.
All right, good evening, Council. I got to talk about some exciting stuff that's been going on with the Paratransit Division. Oops. Okay, so, TARP, which a lot of people call it, the Paratransit Division for TARDA, 2023, we did 191,043 trips. And what that looks like for Slovenia is we have currently 2,471 eligible paratransit users within the city that have been active within the last three years. We have 38 paratransit vehicles currently. Back to Laura's comment about the capital investments going on, I think the paratransit division has been impacted in this area. We've placed a lot of the old vehicles, but we are still running about eight to 10 2015 vehicles, which are going on nine years. And then I have two 2018 vehicles out there in service still. Typically, six to seven years is useful life on these vehicles. And through some of the funding that we've been able to secure through, not only the federal funding, but ODOT, state funding, by 2025, the oldest vehicle will be at 2022. So good news in that state of repair on the paratransit vehicles, especially for populations that really depend on that service every day. One of the very cool things we worked on at TARP's going into the end of '23 and really finished this in '24 is an effort locally through Destination Toledo to become certified travel destination for autism and families with autistic children. As part of that process, we did training, so 80% of the staff that deals with like frontline, that would be the drivers, dispatch, customer service reps, had to complete about a 30-minute training. We did that, and we went above and beyond. I think we ended up with around 92% of the entire staff was trained, and, which is very good. We worked with the local ATU to really get that done with the driver group. So with that, we got a certificate from them, and then now every two years, we'll have to recertify that. So next step, we're going to be working on getting the fixture out and maintenance side done, so the entire operation is certified. Okay, so on the road to zero emissions, so we are currently in early stages of our zero emission bus program. And I got the pleasure of being the first service to get these electric vehicles. So back in the fall, we worked with Tesco out in Oregon to secure six smaller paratransit vehicles. We have one that's currently wrapped with the logo, as you can see on the screen. There are, we have three currently. We're still waiting on three that are in production. Production has been delayed due to battery issues and some other unforeseen circumstances with manufacturing. But Tesco has assured me we should have those by probably late summer this year, which will give us six vehicles that are going into service. Two of them went into test phase today. We're looking at hopefully a full launch on Earth Day of all three vehicles going into revenue service. So pretty exciting times. We'll have 11 total zero emission, full-size buses by 2027. This, again, was unfortunately delayed. The original manufacturer it went to has basically gone bankrupt due to battery issues. So it's kind of a volatile market, but we're doing what we can to kind of stand for all that. Really, the cool thing about Slovenia tied to this kind of zero emission bus program, we got grant funding for training operators and mechanics, right? So mechanics are going to have to change. Used to working on gas, diesel engines now are going to have to be more electric savvy. And really, so we hired a workforce development manager, and her and I had worked with communications and Steve Urbansky at City of Slovenia, City Schools, really on this idea of, they were looking to pilot kind of an EV program. We had EV buses and are getting into that realm, and we're looking at ways to cultivate local talent to fill some of these positions long-term, mechanics, technicians, IT people, et cetera. So we partnered with the career tech, there we go, partnered with the Career Tech School, and we hosted that group this year. We did a full day, so the students all came to the facility. We took them on the tour. They got to see maintenance, they got to see our new bus wash that we installed as they drove through it in a bus, which is always cool. Kids like that kind of stuff. And then we spent about 30 to 45 minutes after lunch, giving them a rundown of kind of the services we provide, giving them an idea of what kind of careers they could possibly get into in public transit. And then we wrapped up the day, giving a tour of the paratransit facility. They got to look at the electric vehicle, get on board, show them the equipment, kind of how the technology works. They got to see the screen. It's all run off a touchscreen, so they got to see that and see that kind of vehicle and ask questions about it. And really, I think the biggest impact this had is exposing those students to the Flex service. I think I had probably three or four students actually sign up for Flex while we were on the tour. I think this is something that will work to cultivate. And then hopefully, this morphs into an apprentice program, so we'll actually have opportunities for students, local schools to come and actually get real-world experience working in Maine, that's kind of customer service.
All right, it's important.
Well, thank you, Mary. You're doing a wonderful job. You're the president of the board, have been for a couple of years now, I believe.
This is my second year.
Sounds like you've really got the operation running well down there.
I wish I...
Probably some of that belongs to Laura.
Let the light shine over there.
And Rick. But it's an excellent report to us. We appreciate you bringing us up to date on the tax change, the update of the vehicles, the change to the routes, and the electric service that's benefiting our residents. It's great to hear.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Council members, have any questions?
A bunch, but I think we'll, I'll put them in writing as the questions that I provided to, and I look forward to additional, but this is a great operational and overview of what's happened over the past couple of years. Thank you for the presentation.
All right. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it very much.
I am a Slovenian, great.
All right. So am I. So is Lindsay.
I gotta say, God, it sounds like you're grading us off.
Yeah, you got your umbrellas?
Yes, I have.
Chuck, thank you for responding and getting that up on the screen.
Okay, Brian, would you circulate those questions?
I'm going to copy all of them.
I'd like to see them.
For sure.
More because I want to be on the response end.
Yes, understood.
All right. We're back on the published agenda. We're at Agenda Item 5, report of the public hearing held this evening at 7:00 in these council chambers. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talking about the report may take as long as the actual meeting itself. So the public hearing was opened a little bit after 7:00. Nobody was in attendance for the public hearing. After a brief explanation of the various changes that are under consideration, there was a motion and a second to ask for the ordinances for the specific changes to be put before council for consideration this evening. And afterward, immediately afterwards, the meeting was adjourned at 7:05 PM, so it was all five minutes.
During, at the end of your public hearing, asked to add these to the agenda, and they have been added as Agenda Item 5A, there are ordinances 22 through 28, 2024. And if you're still willing to do these, we can get them all done tonight. My intent will be to start with Mr. Frye and go around the council chamber counterclockwise and return to Mr. Frye. So we'll start with ordinance 22. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 22, 2024, and read by title only. Amending the codified ordinances of Slovenia 1979 as amended by adding Part 17 rate and fee schedule, I move for passage of ordinance number 22, 2024, as an emergency measure.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 22, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 22, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance 23, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 23, 2024, I'll read by title only. Amending Part 1 Administrative Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 23, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 23, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance 24, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only, ordinance number 24-2024, amending Part 7 Business Regulation Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended. I move for passage of ordinance number 24-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been seconded for passage of ordinance number 24, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 24, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance 25, Mr. Hanam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number 25-2024. I'll read by title only. Amending Part 9 Streets Utilities and Public Services Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended, and I move adoption of ordinance number 25-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 25, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 25, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance 26, Mr. McCann.
I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number 26-2024, amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended. I move passage of ordinance number 26-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 26, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 26, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance 27, Ms. Stowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number 27-2024, and read by title only. Amending Part 13 Building Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended. I move for passage of ordinance number 27-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 27, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 27, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. And finally, ordinance number 28, back to you, Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 28, 2024, and read by title only. Amending Part 15 Fire Prevention Code of the Slovenia Codified Ordinances 1979 as amended, and I move for passage of ordinance number 28, 2024, as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 28, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 28, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you for that passage, and thank you to Ms. Brining and all the staff for your hard work that went in there. There were a lot of minutia details to be updated in those sections of the codified ordinances. And for the students out there, this has been going on here for several months. They did, this isn't the first time they saw it. All right. We are up to Agenda Item 7. Mr. Aller is up, he's got several items again, as has become usual at our meetings. I'm sorry, Agenda Item 6, and first one is resurfacing projects at Bentbrook, Burgess, and Lynnhaven. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we received five bids back on March 18th for our resurfacing program this year. The lowest bid was submitted by Bowers Asphalt and Paving out of Wallbridge, Ohio. Their bid was $188,823.10, which was just over 27% underneath the engineer's estimate. Bowers Asphalt has performed several projects in the city, both for, and for some private development, and they're a very good contractor. Therefore, we recommend approval of the contract with Bowers Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $188,823.10.
Mr. Aller. Obviously, I'm not opposed to doing this, particularly since it's coming this much under budget, but when would this happen?
Well, the big deal is overtime. It's overtime, and it's a change first, obviously.
Yeah, we're holding both.
After school's out?
Yeah.
Before school starts?
Yeah.
Okay. Just double check, I assume that's what you would say, just double check. Thank you.
All right, we do have ordinance number 53, 2024, to award this contract. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number 53, 2024, accepting the bid of Bowers Asphalt and Paving, Inc., and awarding the contract for the Bentbrook Road, Burgess Drive, and Lynnhaven Drive resurfacing project same, authorizing the expenditure for the improvement in the amount of $188,823.10, appropriating funds therefore, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 53, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 53, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now we're up to Agenda Item 7. This has to do with the McCord Road resurfacing project. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project was bid, excuse me, also on March 18th, we received four bids for this project. The engineer's estimate on the project was $709,815, and Henry W. Bergman out of Genoa, Ohio submitted the low bid of $685,765. We just call attention to the second bid was $686,103, $340 separated the...
Pretty low percentage of $685,000 contracts.
Yeah, that's, that was very, very tight bids, so. We, they have, Henry Bergman has completed the post-bid documentation required with ODOT. He's met the requirements for WBE, DBE requirements on the project. And the last project that Bergman performed for the city was on the north-south section of Silica Drive, north of Combin, basically the section between Combin and Northview High School. This project was included as part of our capital improvement plan, and we recommend recommendation, we recommend awarding the contract to Henry W. Bergman in the amount of $685,765.
This is our nickel.
We received $500,000 in ODOT funding and...
Or 200,000.
Approximately 200,000 in OPWC, so very little, 68,000 of this will be our nickel. The remainder will be grant.
This was accelerated here because of availability of funding?
Yeah.
We needed to use it for this?
Yeah.
Those statistics are always very helpful. I mean, I mean that, they let us tell our constituents when we're doing these projects how much we've got in it and where. We do hear about, when you resurface McCord from Slovenia to Brent, my neighbors will complain to me about it, and so will Craig's.
Thank you.
Yep.
We give them the good news. Maybe they're tax dollars, but we're getting them back with the state in effect.
Right, yeah.
Okay, we do have ordinance 54, 2024, to award this contract. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 54, 2024, by title only. Accepting the bid of Henry W. Bergman, Inc., and awarding the contract to the McCord Road Resurfacing Project, same. Authorizing the expenditure for the improvement in the amount of $685,765. Appropriating funds therefore, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 54, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 54, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to Agenda Item 8, this has to do with change order 1 for the Balfour Road Waterline and Resurfacing Project. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, project is going well, actually, all of the waterline is in the ground. We're having material issues, fire hydrants. We're waiting on fire hydrants. Never in 40-plus years of construction would I anticipate that would be waiting on fire hydrants to build a waterline. Regardless, we have had a couple change orders, we've had a couple unrecorded sewer laterals that were discovered as a contractor was digging. Had to take out a couple additional trees. We addressed the temporary working agreements at the last council meeting, and that work has now been completed. And then we had some additional storm sewer work on the south end of the project that we felt, once we saw the condition of it, and knowing that the interchange project was coming up, it would not have been, it was outside the limited access right of way. But we felt that now was the time to get it taken care of, rather than letting it set. So we did some additional storm sewer work at the price. Contractor gave us a very fair price, quite honestly, I was expecting probably about 50 to 70% higher than what they did the work for. So they, I think they were very fair with us on that. As a result, we do have a total change order in the amount of $21,664.19. This would increase the contract to a total of $782,688.59, and we recommend approval.
Are you anticipating a change order number 2 at the end of this project?
There will be a change order 2, but there have been some, we have had some non-performed items and of that nature, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that will shake out.
Have substantial increase, perhaps a decrease.
Contractor's been very, very good on this project, we haven't had any, any big things occur on it.
So, Mr. Aller, could you expand a little bit on your comment about the four undiscovered, unrecorded sewer connections? And what the, so these are homes that were connected that we didn't have record of?
The, the records that we had were not accurate.
Okay. In other words, were they paying for the utility?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to be in a politically correct manner, just curious. Okay.
That was not the situation, it was just, it was not as we.
Otherwise, we're gonna hear some squawks from those four homeowners when that bell shuts off, because it would be ugly.
Yeah, we, we did, unfortunately, we did have some, we had some basement damage and things of that nature because of some things, but we've, we've resolved everything.
Thank you.
All right, we do have in your council packets ordinance number 55, 2024, to approve this change order 1. Mr. McCann.
55, yes. Thank you. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 55-2024, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number 1 to the city's agreement with Gettys Paving and Excavating, Inc., for the Balfour Road Waterline improvements and the resurfacing project to reflect additional work performed on the project. Increase in the contract by the amount of $21,664.19. I move for passage of ordinance number 55-2024 as an emergency measure.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 55, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 55, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to Agenda Item 9. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're taking a look at our next section of Main Street, continue heading south. Our current program will take us basically to Convent Boulevard, not all of the way, but pretty much to Convent. And we're taking a look at the next piece heading south. Team McCog has notified us that they're getting ready for applications, and so we want to make sure that we have our project ready. We've utilized STBG funds for the sections between Monroe and Convent. We did the section between Monroe and Ten Mile, utilize STBG. We also use STBG in the section between Ten Mile and Convent, that's being done this year, and then this would be the next phase. We, we do them in smaller sections like that, because if we did it in larger sections and tried to do everything at once, so to speak, that would put us in competition with the larger projects and a lot of illegal projects. And because of the traffic volumes and the traffic counts that they have, we probably wouldn't score as well in that category, the large project category, as we do in the small project category. In the small project category, it's, it's a little easier to get funded in that, because there aren't as many, and it doesn't soak up the money as fast in that small project category. You're guaranteed, you're limited on the funding you can get, but you're almost guaranteed, everything but guaranteed, the way we do our projects, of getting funding. So we know we'll get a $400,000 grant on each of these smaller sections. So we've got $800,000 so far, this would be another $400,000, assuming we're successful. And then, as you all know, we use those funds to leverage additional monies with OPWC and get even more money through the OPWC program to go towards the project. We requested a proposal from Tetra Tech to put together a tentative project, including a construction cost with a roundabout at Convent and Main Street. And then, obviously, reconstructing the remainder of the pavement on each side of the intersection there. They, their proposal is in the amount of $4,000 to complete that, and we'll utilize our 222, one of our pavement tax. It's one of the ODOT tax, yeah, license fee tax funds. We'll utilize that, that account to do this study. Tetra Tech, we've used on several of our studies, and we would recommend moving forward with this study.
This is just a $4,000 commitment that we are asking for tonight. That seems right for, for the application of the funds. Before we move ahead on this, if you or Joe give us an update of the two road closures coming up tomorrow and Wednesday north of this location.
I'll let Joe, because I didn't want to close Main Street, so, I don't, no, I'm kidding.
On the record.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Main Street has two closures scheduled, I think one hit the blade today, probably another one will hit tomorrow. But this is planned sanitary sewer work that we had going on, we have two sanitary laterals that are in terrible shape, that aren't able to be rehabilitated trenchlessly, which means it's not digging up the road. So these two have to be done, there's, there's no really way to get around it. One is Tuesday, south of Convent, just south of Convent, maybe across from the mini-mart, to give you kind of an idea where that one is. Should take a day to do. We will advance north on Wednesday, and just at the base of the Ten Mile Creek Bridge, on the south side of it, across from Root, and the, now the Toledo Center for Eating Disorder, I think it's called, right in front of their property too. So we have both of those days planned, Thursday is a float day, just in case we run into any issues, so.
And this was coordinated with St. Joseph Parish, you're on spring break, so it's not affecting their school transportation. There were, I did receive concerns from business owners at the shopping center, Silica and Main Street. But I think it sounds like we're being in good shape.
Should be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aller, going back to this, is there room for a roundabout at Convent and Main?
It will offset, the intent is, the tentative drawings have shown that being kind of offset there, the offset to the northwest.
Okay. Because I was driving through there. The sister's property. I was driving through there today, and that one residence is pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
So it'll all be this way? Northwest, yeah, okay, got it. Where the sister's, St. Francis sign is. Yeah, we may have to. Won't be it to the sign. They put those, it just seems like a few years ago, they put those pine trees in there, but they, it's been there a while, that's grown up a lot. Yeah. That was very close to being a new car wash and gas station before they bought it.
On that note, is there, and this might even pertain to, I know we're talking about some Haroun roundabouts a little later, but is there, how do we decide which intersections qualify? Is there like a general policy? Can you update us on that, as we're aware?
Any, from, from an operation and maintenance standpoint, the roundabout, two things. From an operation standpoint, the roundabouts just keep traffic moving. You don't, there's not.
From a mile standpoint, you don't have cars saying, no, you go, no, you go.
From a maintenance standpoint, you don't have the traffic signal. You know, we're replacing, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last couple of years and into this year to update all of our traffic signals, because they're all obsolete. My guess is with technology, the way it's advancing, that's gonna, that 20-year timeframe is gonna reduce that to 10 years. So it enables you to get rid of the traffic signals and keep traffic moving, and not be reliant on power, the signal working correctly, and all of that. Your traffic counts do play a part into it in the size of them, more so in the size, other than, rather than yes you can or no you can. There are some situations where you get into higher traffic volumes where, yeah, it won't work, or, well, US 23 is a classic example. The initial study included a look at a, at a roundabout, that would have been a three-lane roundabout.
That's on the east side. It would have had Monroe Street and Alexis going into it, I saw those drawings. They were being promoted pretty well at the time.
No, it was, you know, it was just, Ohio isn't, that, that would have been very difficult for this area, and so we, we went.
One near the Colosseum in Rome comes to mind.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just chaos.
They're, they're a little more, you know, that Europe is a little more used to them, and they probably would handle it, but it would have been the first, the first in, I think the first in Ohio. I don't think there's a three-lane roundabout, so.
So anywhere they fit, more or less, is, you know, excluding US 23 and things like that, we'd be open to some of those.
What about the speed of the vehicle? Because, you know, talking about the Haroun Road area down there, where there kind of cuts off, forks off, and basically still Holland-Sylvania at that point. That's 45 miles an hour there, that's pretty quick for a roundabout. Unless your intention is to slow the traffic down.
Yeah, yeah, what you do at the, at the roundabouts is you, is you change the geometry in such a manner so that you're getting that traffic down, slowed down to about the 20 mile per hour, per hour range, going through the roundabout. McCord, McCord Road by Springfield High School is a good example. That's a, that's a 40, 40 mile per hour speed limit going down through there, but when you hit that roundabout, you've got to, you've got to slow down to about the 20 mile an hour range.
There's a classic one over on Route 51, coming north into Fremont to Terra Tech. That one was 55 miles an hour, people were used to going through there at 55 miles an hour, hits Route 30, I believe. Man, that one, you really have to slow down for that.
That one catches you off guard, because you are moving at a, at a much higher, like you, like you indicated, you're moving in that 50 mile per hour range. And then you come up on that one, that one, I go that way for football games each fall, and it catches me almost every time, yeah.
The minion centennial goes from 50 to a roundabout. I was not a fan of roundabouts when they first started going in. But as people have gotten used to driving them, I think they do keep moving traffic, and you don't have to stop during non-busy times and wait for light. It also has the effect of not bunching traffic together. You don't sit there and then all of a sudden you have 10 cars come out of it, it keeps traffic spread out, which is a safer situation. Okay, any other questions from? Mr. Aller, about? This study proposal? If not, we have ordinance 56, 2024, to award this proposal contract to Terra Tech. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 56, 2024, by title only. Accepting the proposal of Tetra Tech to provide a construction cost estimate for the Main Street and Convent Boulevard reconstruction and roundabout project. Appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $4,000, I move passage as an emergency measure.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 56, 2024, as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 56, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to Agenda Item 10. This is a storm sewer proposal coming from the Lucas County Engineer's Office, and how Mr. Aller proposed we respond to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if, if any of you remember, it probably, it started a couple of years ago, but Lucas County Engineer's Office, as well as the Fulton County Engineer's Office, started having public meetings. Because the Joint Board of Lucas and Fulton County Commissioners had been requested by the engineers to approve putting Ten Mile Creek and Ottawa River under a ditch maintenance petition. Those meetings were pretty, pretty boisterous, they were, a lot of, a lot of vocal activity at those meetings. The one for Ten Mile Creek, well, one of the meetings at Ten Mile Creek, for Ten Mile Creek was called at Wildwood Park. And I attended that one, and the county engineer answered a lot of, a lot of questions that evening on this project. With that petition, all properties that are within the watershed area of Ten Mile Creek or Ottawa River would be assessed. And that includes the properties that are within the city of Slovenia. Most of the city of Slovenia is in that watershed, so most of the properties in the city will be assessed. The county engineer has estimated, has estimated that the, the average homeowner, homeowner costs will be about $7 per year. If you have commercial properties, it will, it will fluctuate. The total amount that they anticipate collecting from all of the properties within the city of Slovenia is $160,000. The total assessments to be collected from the entire watershed is about $2.55 million. We have two options on how those assessments will be handled. The first option is the city can choose to pay the assessments for all of the properties in the city. If we were to choose that option, I would recommend utilizing our storm and ditch maintenance fee to pay. fee to pay that amount and then adjusting, making any adjustments that might be necessary for, to cover our total costs.
We've got a fee adjustments.
Fee adjustments, yeah. The, the other option is to just simply allow the assessments to go onto the properties. And the property owners would pay them with their tax bill as they pay all of their other taxes. And city wouldn't be, the city government, I should say, wouldn't be involved at all. If option one is chosen, where the city pays for the assessments, we currently perform maintenance activities on those ditches. We go in and we do some weed whipping, weed whipping, tree removals. We remove log jams. We go in and address concerns when we get phone calls about plugs. And so we perform a lot of work already in, in those ditches. If option one is chosen, we will have, will have the opportunity to then invoice the Lucas County Engineers Office for all of that work that we do in those ditches and get that cost recouped. We've done, we've taken a look at the work that we've done in the past and we don't have, we don't have detailed records on some of the things that will be reimbursable. But we feel that we're very safe in saying that we would be able to recoup about $90,000 of that 160,000 that we would pay to the Lucas County Engineers. So what would happen is we pay an assessment of $160,000 to the Lucas County Engineers. And then once we perform all, all of our work, we send an invoice to the Lucas County Engineers and they give us $90,000 back. So it's an opportunity for us to recoup that cost.
We have discussed this at staff and there's another advantage to us working option one. We can continue to perform these ditch maintenance operations on our schedule, get them done for our drainage systems rather than waiting for this joint county task force to come through and maybe not address it as soon as we. I prefer to be in the driver's seat with this and be able to continue the services that our residents expect rather than saying, oh, you got to talk to the county engineer and he gets around to it later. So they're suggesting this and are they okay with option one? Or would it be under their control and their decision to maintain?
The Lucas County Engineers?
Yes.
They're, they're okay and understand that it would be our intent. If we paid, if the city paid for the full assessments, they understand that we would then invoice them for the work that we do on that ditch. Yeah.
Just a follow-up. What is the contractual commitment between the city and this consortium? And can that deal change?
You have the ordinance that's before you. And that does not address the, the Ohio Revised Code allows for any work that's done in, in the ditch to be considered part of the maintenance cost of that ditch. And so that is, that is what the county engineer is using to say, yes, you, those are all reimbursable expenses.
Okay. So I'm going to take it to a different level. We had a public hearing, I don't remember if it was a public hearing, public information about potentially modifying the route of Ten Mile Creek by, I don't know what the names of the streets are, by Eagle Trace or?
Ratcliffe.
Yes. And if I recall, we had to get the state, the state told us we had to get every homeowner to, to agree and somebody didn't agree. What's the status of that project and how does that interact with this conversation?
If we were, if we were to go the same route and try to get it through the state grant, we would, we would get the same, same message from the state. You got to have every property owner on board. With this process, the county engineer has the ability to say, you're going to, it's, it's going to get done. And be able to force the easement needs in there. That's where, that's where we were getting stuck was.
No, no, I remember that. And so who, who's taking the heat though? I mean, we're going to take some heat on that if that's the direction this goes. But I'm just trying to make sure that, do we then no longer have control? Is it now the county engineer having control of that project and how it gets laid out and the timing and all that stuff?
He, he would take over some, how, exactly how, what the contractual liability or contractual agreement is, I'm not 100% sure. But he would be the entity that, that places the, the need for the project as a ditch maintenance project.
Go to the state?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the next question. Long distance between, no, Ten Mile Creek, two counties, Ottawa River, lots of moving parts. If I recall, that number was 1.4 million dollars. Virtually all of it was coming from the state or all of it was coming from the state, correct?
Correct.
So other projects along that same route that have similar changes where you may not get state funding could be embedded in this cost? Trying to figure out whether 160 grand is five years to 160 grand or whether it's double that number. No way to know.
No way to know.
Nothing we can do about it either way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just.
And they would still be assessing our individual property owners for that larger amount, whether.
Oh, yeah.
Do this or not.
No, I agree, Mayor. I'm just trying to make sure when, when we get somebody yelling at us.
Yep.
That we have a better, a full understanding of that we don't own this when we can't do anything about it and we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate it.
The project you were referring to, that one property owner was delaying, I have discussed it, I know Kevin's discussed it with county engineer Panouski. He was willing to force the issue before, but he'll be in a far better position to force the issue with that property owner going ahead. And those grant funds have not been sacrificed or lost, yeah, is my understanding.
They haven't been lost. But it's one of those situations, they haven't been lost, but I don't know if they'll be available by the time, by the time we get there.
This was one property owner who liked the view out of his breakfast table window and he would lose it, wouldn't have as many trees on it or something if we worked it. And he didn't care that his neighbor's properties were eroding down into the watershed and they were going to have foundation problems. Just unbelievable situation.
One last question on this. If, it sounds like administration and I, I'm leaning to agree with option one, is that a forever decision or can we, if we do that for a while and we decide nah, never mind, we'd like to go to option two, is that doable?
It's a forever decision.
That's what I was afraid you were going to say.
Okay.
Mr. Allen, I have a question as well. So we're currently maintaining this today ourselves for 90,000. And Lucas County is saying they would do the same service for 160,000 or are they, is there some additional services they would provide?
When you, with a ditch petition, any work that they do on Ten Mile Creek or Ottawa River anywhere, so like the work, I don't know. If you saw west of town in Centennial, in the Centennial Road area and that, you saw some ditch where they, they laid back the ditch banks and they put in some shelves and. That type of work would be assessed to everybody. So our residents, even though that work is being done out in Sylvania Township, our residents, because they benefit from the changes in, in the waterway, they would pay for a portion of that project.
Be water flows downhill.
Yeah.
So, you know, the work that's done in Sylvania Township benefits us as well. I didn't, that's the whole deal with, with this proposal.
That's maintenance petitions, that's, that's the whole thing. Everybody along there, even, even if you don't live along the, on the, along the river, you still benefit because your storm drainage ends up there. Part of this assessment, part of that 160,000 is cities, in this case us, we're being assessed for our streets because they're impervious and they collect storm water.
Does, does that impact or influence future projects for construction where a lot of places, they require holding ponds and different things like that? Is that something that, I know that we contemplate that, but we don't have that many larger projects.
Right.
But is that part of this puzzle to reduce storm drainage or not, not, not material in the conversation?
It's, it's not material to this part of the conversation. That's more U, USC PA storm detention.
Okay.
Issue. So not, not as, I mean, it's all storm water, but it's not direct.
Okay. Thank you.
I do not believe you need to take action on this tonight. If you'd like to refer it to Mr. McCann's committee, you can.
Well, yeah, I, I will say, I mean, if we want to refer to committee, that's fine. But I don't want to subject my neighbors to the vagaries of the county engineer on addressing these issues when they come up. You know, we have water, that's why we have our own water department. I'd like to, I would like to have, like our water department to expand to cover the rest of the city. I've been talking about that for years. Because it is dramatically different when you call the city of Sylvania for a water issue than when you call the city of Toledo for a water issue. And it's not that many residents, but they're, but those folks are definitely impacted by that difference. And I think for the cost we're looking at here.
I mean, we're talking.
Peanuts and delivering kind of service that I think our neighbors expect. You know, and they're going to like being able to call the, they're not going to like it if they call the city and say, oh, we don't do that anymore. You got to call the Lucas County Engineer. And not only is that, not only should they not like it, but it isn't as efficient and, you know, we know what we're doing and we know how to do it. And I'm assuming that if we, if we pawn this off to the Lucas County Engineer, I mean, it wouldn't affect our staffing in any significant way.
No.
Yeah. I mean, we got, we got the people to do this.
Yeah.
So I'm ready to move forward, but I'd be happy to sit in a meeting with Brian and chat about it if you want.
How much control would we have moving forward?
From?
I mean, when they, when they talked about the West, they came in and said, this is what we're going to do. So they're going to look at the city and they're going to say, this is what needs to be done and we're going to do.
I, I think we'll have, I, I think we'll have some input. Now, will we have complete 100% control? No. The, but really from a ditch maintenance perspective, if anybody wanted to have this type of work done, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the, that, the control anyways. It would reside with the county engineer. But it, you know, now obviously people aren't going to be around, around forever. The good thing is both Joe and I have a really good working relationship with the county engineer. And so I think he'll, we'll have substantial and meaningful input to anything that would take place within the city. But it, ultimately it would be his project.
The next question is, the letter states, as you may have aware, the engineers office has requested, so if we do nothing, what happens?
The, the county commissioner, the Joint Board of County Commissioners will decide whether the petition moves forward or not. So the, assuming that the commissioners approve the petition, which I would fully anticipate, the assessments will, will occur. It's just how are those assessments going to be handled?
Mr. Allen, looking down the line, let's say our maintenance goes up and if we were to go down option A and if we were to be asking for reimbursement for the work that we do, can you anticipate any limits beyond, I guess sort of number wise of what we'd be able to ask for reimbursement? Like what if our maintenance goes up beyond what our assessment is? If it goes above this 160 number, do we get a hard cutoff or is there, I'm just curious how the.
Any, from a maintenance standpoint, from a ditch maintenance standpoint, anything that we do in that ditch that improves water flow or maintains water flow or things of that nature, and it has to be within the waterways themselves. So, you know, if we do some catch basin repairs or things like that, that, that doesn't count. But anything that we do within those waterways counts as, as a maintenance action. Now, would they come, when I talked about the good working relationship, if they come back and say, yeah, we're not going to give you more money than we, than we got from you, that's.
Because you're spending it in township.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would guess that's the response we would get, but the, the potential could be there. And the county engineer could come in and do a, do a million dollar project within the city limits and everybody else, everybody else is going to pay for that, so.
Could we, could we drop the Elton project on his lap? That's a ditch.
They, that's the water, that's the Water United States issue again. If that's, if that's a, if that's part of the watershed, that's a problem.
The, the potential is there, yeah.
But stuff like that could basically, we could go to the county engineer and say, hey, you know, this is helping our ditch issue and it helps the water flow and this should be socialized amongst the two county section of property owners. And likewise, everybody else is going to be doing the exact same thing.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Everybody starts going around. And remember, city of Toledo is part of this too. So, yeah. They're going to have more issues. Yes.
I think where I was going with this was wondering, is part of the reason of us keeping this under, let's say, our wings is so that we can be more responsive to our residents if in the long run it doesn't end up saving time? Like I'm wondering if there's going to be an approval process that'll have to be done that is slower or, I guess I'm wondering where that balance comes from of we can just request whatever we can justify or if there's going to end up being an approval process that slows down because we are, I, I am aware of some of the slowdowns that can occur from permits, working with the city of Toledo. But I was just curious if you had any anticipation of things like that that could neutralize some of the benefits of.
Sure.
I, I like the first option a lot. I'm just curious about this direction.
Looking into the, into the future, you know, I, the one thing I don't know is, you know, will, you know, what will the next county engineer, what will their priorities be? Will the, will the legislature change anything in the, in the revised code that requires changes to what is reimbursable or not reimbursable? I can, I can, what we've done is said, okay, here are our activities that we do. And I listed that, listed them out and said, it's my understanding that these activities will be reimbursable expenses. And he, he replied back to me, yes, all of those, any time, any equipment that you have doing those would be reimbursable expenses. So that's, that's what I have today.
And remember, our community is going to pay this 160,000 dollars now and whatever it becomes, whether we aggregate it through us and get some of it reimbursed or the county just takes it and uses it wherever they want. This is a better outcome potential. Yes, it puts the city in the middle, but the positive is it puts the city in the middle.
Which brings me to the next, how we.
Which brings me to the next, how we pass this ordinance this evening and the administration decides the option.
City council has to, has to approve us doing option one.
Okay, and where is that in the...
It is the legislation.
We assume the assessments and pay the assessments.
Assume and pay assessments, got it.
Yep.
I don't think it has to be done tonight, if you want to think about it.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, I'll defer to the others on the committee that...
I'm comfortable with moving forward with option one.
I am as well.
All right, Lynn, let's find out. We have ordinance 57-2024 to choose option one. If we don't choose option one, option two, we don't have to do anything because the county's going to report... The joint county commissioners are going to impose it on our residents without our say. So, we have this ordinance to do it. And Mr. McCann, it's yours to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 57-2024, declaring the intent of the city of Sylvania to assume and pay assessments for the Ten Mile Creek Ottawa River Ditch Petition Number 1053, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to notify the joint board of Fulton County and Lucas County Commissioners of such intent. I move for passage of ordinance number 57-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
I've moved that seconded for passage of ordinance number 57-2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 57-2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Bottom line with this also is, if this group, whether it's the county engineer or the joint county commissioners, start doing something you don't like or raising the assessments, you go to them and complain. And they're going to have a much larger voice, the city of Sylvania going, than 10 of our residents going. Back to the agenda, we're now on the second page of the agenda, Agenda Item 11. This is a right-of-way dedication for the property that we have sold to Madeline, I believe.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as part of the discussions with the new property owner that purchased the property, we indicated the desire to retain some property on the southern property line for a roundabout at the triangle there of Haroun Road and Holland-Sylvania Road. They had no issue with it. We actually are starting to put together necessary information to possibly do another tax increment financing section down there, which will enable us to use those funds towards the cost of the project and also be able to leverage those funds for additional OPWC monies for construction of the roundabout. So, property owners agreeable to it. We just have to get in there, we need to do a survey and develop a plat that shows that it's being right-of-way to be able to be part of that future roundabout. And we've got a proposal from DGL Consulting Engineers in the amount of $10,285 to do that survey and put together the right-of-way dedication plat that's needed for that section. And we would ask for approval of that proposal in the amount of $10,285.
Okay. Yes. Going back to the roundabout discussion, you know, and I'm just trying to kind of grasp the big picture long-term. We would have a roundabout at Main and Ravine, Holland-Sylvania and Haroun, and also Haroun and Ravine. Is that right?
They want Main and Cobb.
Main and Cobb, yes.
Cobb, Brad and Haroun, and Holland-Sylvania and Haroun. And we have a proposed layout for one at...
Just trying to picture it all.
That'll be, Joe, Joe will be standing up here talking about that one.
They don't like too many of them in a row. Those are separated out. I don't like Door Street and 475 hitting west. You go through three roundabouts there really quick. This is a study, this is not a study, this is a surveying proposal to identify the amount of easement that we need. Is that correct?
Yes, right-of-way, yep.
All right, we have ordinance 58-2024 to award this proposal to DGL Consulting. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 58-2024, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide professional surveying services for the Haroun and other Holland-Sylvania Roundabout projects, providing funds therefore in the amount of $10,285. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 58-2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 58-2024 is enacted as an emergency measure.
Thank you for...
You may sit down.
We are up to Agenda Item 12. This has to do with natural gas aggregation. And I believe Mr. Fry needs to push back before we talk and discuss this issue. So, is there a motion to authorize Mr. Fry to push away from the table? Who moved?
Seconded.
Move that.
Seconded to allow Mr. Fry to push away due to a potential ethnic interest.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and let the record show that Mr. Fry is now not on the decision-making table. With that, Mrs. Bryony, tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you guys know, I sent out an email maybe about a month ago telling you that we couldn't find savings on the market. But our amazing consultant kept working and was able to identify...
Careful now.
Identify a supplier to provide savings for the customers in the city's natural gas aggregation program. So, it will be starting in October. The current agreement expires in May, so there will be a period of time. And there's a letter going out to the customers that explains that. They won't be in the aggregation, they'll be back. So, this, the proposed agreement is with Archer Energy and runs for 20 months, starting in October through May, March of 2026. So, the savings isn't substantial, but it, anything helps, right? It's $8 per customer until March of 2025. The Columbia adder gets reissued, they set it in March. So, but we, Palmer does not anticipate our agreement. Our customers losing money based on the agreement. So, they have recommended approval of the agreement and I would recommend it as well.
And the same agreement is going to other communities in the aggregation.
All right, any questions from Ms. Bryony? Okay, we have ordinance 59-2024 to do this. Mr. McCann.
I thank you to our consultant, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number 59-2024, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a customer supply agreement with Archer Energy for the provision of natural gas to residential and small commercial customers within the city of Sylvania beginning in October 2024. I move for passage of ordinance number 59-2024 as an emergency measure.
Moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 59-2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 59-2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. And now that we've completed this agenda item, let the record show that Mr. Fry has rejoined us at the council table. We are at Agenda Item 13. We have a service department Chevy Impala to be offered for auction at cop deals. Mr. Eller, can you tell us about this one, since it's a service department?
Yes, this is a vehicle that's been in the department for several years. It was a used vehicle when we got it. We're, it's just almost, well, it is 20 years old. We've got some other vehicles in our other departments and are able to utilize, going through the hand-me-down process, being able to utilize one of the vehicles that was in those departments, so.
This the one with the city decals on the side that you drive?
Yes, yes.
There's another one that sometimes the city administration drives. I know the city administration one, just to put that in perspective, I was driven to Chicago in that vehicle when it was newer because they moved the bond rating hearings out of New York City due to 2000 attack in New York, and I had to go to Chicago for it instead. So, instead of flying into Chicago and being picked up by a limo, I was driven by Mr. Plod to Chicago.
I'm sure he enjoyed that.
Almost drove on the sidewalk there to go. So, that, that's the other one. I don't know if there's any plans for that, I'd probably ask fewer miles on it than the engineering department.
It's, the plan is for that one to, will be, well, Joe, Joe will have the plan. But the plan is to get to dispose of that one next year, kind of doing the same thing, hand-me-down process and then dispose of that vehicle.
I had fear of having to introduce myself to some of Chicago's finest and establish friendly relationships with him when Mr. Plod almost drove on the sidewalk to get us across to another road.
We, the service department upgraded, we went from a 2004 to a 2013. So, we're moving up in the years of vehicles.
Nice. All right, so you get an 11-year-old car to drive?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fry, we need a motion to approve this vehicle going to auction.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, five more years and this will be an antique. I'll make a motion to, to authorize the administration to put the 2004 Chevy Impala that's no longer needed for our city operations on gov deals for disposal and sale per Mr. Eller's recommendation and memo as of the 1st of April 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the sale of the service department's 2004 Chevy Impala for auction on gov deals at cop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any committee reports to be made at this time? Or referrals to county council committees? If not, we are up to added Agenda Item 16. Chief Miller would like to give us an update on the Flak camera system, now operational.
Yes, good evening. It's been several months ago that we brought to council the opportunity for us to join the Flak safety system. And I just want to kind of bring you up to where we're at. It's been a long, arduous process. This month, we finally turned all 15 cameras on. We've got them all operational. And what you're seeing in front of you in the top page is what's called the transparency portal. And this is something that Flak offers to us. I spent the morning on the phone with them building this to our specifications. And it's kind of an overview of what the Flak system is to the public. And I've already put in a ticket with IT. This will be posted on our webpage under operations. So, it'll be open for residents or anyone to look at it. It gives them an idea of what we do with the Flak system. And that was everyone's concern when we talked to you and brought it officially out. So, it's a way to let our residents and visitors know how we're using it, that the data retention is only for 30 days. We have 15 cameras. We have also chosen to share with the public who we are sharing the camera accessibility with. So, you'll see that grow. In fact, from the time that we did this this morning till this evening, I've approved another 84 requests. So, a lot of it is, there's a few nationwide and there's a lot within the state. And also with them, sharing with us, we're sharing with them. So, it's a transfer of information, so it benefits both of us. The hot list that it does is the National Crime Database that it pulls the information from, as well as the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, the Amber Alert Center in that system. So, what you'll see next, the next three lines on the right side of your page is what will change as it gets updated. So, within the last 30 days, which should be from March 3rd to today, I believe, is what it was, 275,211 vehicles have been detected by the cameras. And we've had 211 hot list hits in the last 30 days. And that includes everything that's on the hot list. It could be a wanted person, it could be a person that's a registered sex offender that has a license plate tied to their status. It could be a stolen vehicle. So, there's a whole host of things that officers can program the system when they get on duty to alert them to. And it will, in turn, within 15 seconds, give them a snapshot of that picture, of that vehicle and the plate and a location it was last seen at. So, and the number of searches that we've had conducted on our camera system in the last 30 days was 55. And that may seem like a lot, but that could be just from one, you could have 10 searches for one incident. So, if you're looking for something and you don't find it with the license plate, maybe it's a number off, so we're going to try something else. And it's all related to the same case. And for audit purposes internally, the officers have to list a case number or a dispatch number, why they're searching. And then we go back and audit them and just make sure that everything's on the up and up and no one is checking friends and family members.
Chief 55, that's us or that's us and all the other external organizations?
That's us.
Okay.
It's a little high right now because we just had training two weeks ago. So, we were, we were showing examples, so it shows up. But on page two, and just to kind of help explain this, these are the total amount of plates that were read in that same 30-day period. 2,268,081 plates. For our 15 cameras. And a couple of the cameras were not functional all 30 days. Now, why is the difference between the plate versus the vehicle? It's because artificial intelligence is a wonderful thing. And it recognizes that that plate has been through our city because it's, maybe just be a resident, and it's read the plate 50 times. So, these are every plate, account of every plate it's read. The vehicle is looking at unique plates. So, if you have a plate that's number one and it's been read 100 times, it's going to recognize it as one vehicle. So, that's the striking difference that you're getting with the one. With the plate reading, you're getting an account of how many vehicles are going through. With the vehicles, it's the actual tally of vehicles.
So, when Mr. McCann's speeding from across the city down Monroe Street, he's going to get, his plate's going to get picked up multiple times? Is that what's going on?
Plate's going to get picked up multiple times. At a speed, but the plate. Because we don't, we don't do traffic infractions. It registers as a single vehicle.
Right, see, so I only sped once. Okay, fair enough.
We'll go back to the 200, what's the difference between the 211? Those are actual hits?
The 211 means that it, the system says you've got a... The 211 means that it, the system says you've got a possible match on a hit list.
From, from one of the hot lists alerts.
The hot list could be a warrant, it could be a stolen vehicle, it could be a registered sex offender. It could be an Amber Alert, anything that's.
The last 30 days, from those hot lists, we've had 211 hits. And that gave us 211 opportunities to inquire about that particular vehicle. And that 211 could be, is that, are those individual vehicles or are those individual camera readings?
No, those are individual, those are vehicles. It's, it's triggered 211 hits. So if that car has a warrant and it drives through three cameras, that's three of the hits.
That's three of that, that's what I thought. Okay, got it.
So, and just like if you have a person that has a warrant that lives in the city and they're driving through, it's going to increase your amount of hits because they're driving through.
All right, follow-up to that number. It says number of owned cameras 15, and it says devices 17.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to work with them to see why we have a discrepancy. We own 15. But we're not paying for those two, so. Yeah.
Could you elaborate again, touch on the hot list and how one ends up on the hot list? I know you mentioned it could be a couple of examples. And if we added something, does that go across all the external organizations? Like if we were looking to be specific, or?
We can share our hot lists if we want with another agency. Like what would make the most sense is sharing it with Sylvania Township. If we have a, and we can make a personalized hot list. If we have an individual that has a domestic violence and they've got a protection order and they're high risk of going back and offending, assaulting family members. We want to know if that person is coming through the city possibly and headed, say they're living with relatives, they're not even supposed to be in the city. We can share that hot list with the township and it would pop up and give us a warning that this plate was seen at this camera location at this time. And then we would know to start looking or heading towards the victim's house, just in case that's where the person's headed.
Or we could share with Toledo as well.
And we could share with Toledo as well.
And is, does a person notify that they are put on a hot list?
No. No, because most of them that are, well, they got a warrant out for them, so they've been charged.
I get the case where, yes, they've been charged with a. Yes, yes. I totally get those. Okay, and?
We, again, have to have a valid reason to put it on the hot list. And that's driven by policy for our officers if we're creating our own. And we're setting up a process where it's audited quarterly by the sergeants of those officers to maintain that hot list and make sure it stays on for extended periods of time.
Okay, so just what I'm hearing is that you, we can look for anybody with a warrant and those will get a hit. Or we can say we know the specific plate for the domestic violence example or whatever. We could put that specific plate number in and that would give us a hit. But us putting that in would not give a hit, you know, in Garden City, Michigan or wherever else.
Right, because they don't need to know about it. That's more related to us versus when it's pulling the data from the Center for Missing and Exploited or the National Crime Database. That's what everyone needs to know about. Because if you got a stolen car.
But if you had a warrant in Michigan, would we get notified here?
It would have to be a high enough level, probably a felony warrant. And even then, it may not be able to be extradited. And as with this, you'll see on the hot list policy, it requires the officers to verify it before they take any action. Because we had one show up when we were looking and it misread the plate. It is artificial intelligence, it's not perfect. And it hit on a partial hit. So it recognized like three letters on the plate and thought it was a Georgia plate and was like, hey, this has got a hit. And that's why the officers are physically look at it and run the plate and make sure before you take any actions. So step back and make sure.
Got it, cool.
Tool, it's not a save-all.
This is very helpful, I like the way that they isolate us.
Yeah, so if anyone has any questions for you, you can always direct them to our website probably later.
You've been able to share with me a couple of practical positives to help solve. So I don't know whether you could share one with council or?
We could share a couple. At the bottom of the page, you'll see a recent success story. We'll be working on filling those in too. Within 48 hours of us training our road patrol officers on this system, they were all very eager to get out, sign in, see how this new technology works. They actually had a hit skip accident. And the road patrol officers were able to use the cameras to assist them in locating the description of the suspect vehicle and the vehicle and solve the, the hit skip. They assisted us with that too. The individual stole a credit card and decided to go fill out his card, which then gave us a picture of him and his car at the gas station. And once we had that information, we could put it into the Flock system, track back his travels. We have him coming into the city prior to what our neighborhoods had on their cameras on their homes. And then we had the Flock cameras in Toledo showing him headed out of town. So everything comes together in a nice little package to place the person. So it has already paid dividends just in the short time that we've been getting it up and running. And I look forward to what we can do with it in the future.
Chief, regarding the ticket that you submitted to IT for the information.
It'll go on the Sylvania Police website under operations tab.
So will the administration be publicizing this to the public to let them know it's there? And also a potential ban on the city website to direct them to there for a certain amount of time?
We will put it out on our Facebook page to alert people that we're.
Copying on ours. We did do a mayor's message about the Flock cameras six months ago or so. I could do that as an update here in future months.
That'd be great.
And I'll get the chief's recommendation before I do that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now move on to add agenda item 17. Mr. Sanford wanted to give us an update on the autism training. It sounds like TARDA, paratransit was able to be successful.
Yes, and piggyback on what he said, but thank you, Mayor. Our training, there's still some people left to complete. He said that they met the 80% and we have met the 80%. So we've submitted the paperwork to the organization. And I think we'll get more of a feedback now as to how it gets promoted and how we can use that certification. And he said they're closer to 92%, but 80 was the threshold that we had to hit and we've hit that. So really thanks to everybody for doing it. If you haven't completed, please do, we have to be TARDA now, we have to get better at 92%. But no, it was a very good experience, good cooperation with everybody. And now we'll be working with the organization about the promotion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanford. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. If there's no further items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting, two weeks from tonight, on Monday, April 15th at 7:30 in these council chambers. Thank you all for attending.